Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for Tuesday, January 28th, 2014. Madam Clerk, well, let's all rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Pardies begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the viewing public, if they noticed, the kind of the tempo of the Pledge of Allegiance this evening is because we have twenty-some-odd elementary school kids who said the Pledge of Allegiance the way we all said it when we were in third grade. And they are dressed in very colorful outfits, I'm sure you'll get to see them here momentarily. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Irwin.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Adam.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Item number four is requests for any continuance of any public hearing item. Does the council have any requests for any of those items? The chair has none, and so we will move to item five, that is special presentation. If you'll give me a moment, I'll go down to the podium. We have two special presentations this evening. Tonight, we're going to begin by recognizing one of our premier Catholic high schools in the area. We are honoring Lorena High School. Lorena has been named the 2013 National Blue Ribbon School. Now, those of you viewing at home and those of you around Thousand Oaks, to be a National Blue Ribbon School, you're recognized as one of the top schools in the country. So I'd like to invite up Bob Rummer, who's president of Lorena High School, and Dr. Shannon Gomez, who's principal of Lorena High School, to join me in acknowledging this tremendous achievement. Let's give him a hand. This award is administered by the United States Department of Education. Having had a graduate of Lorena High School, I can tell you that not only do they educate outstanding young women, but they go far surpass just the academic achievements. These are young ladies that grow into young women and excel in really both the academic, the athletic, and just good character. And so you should be very proud of your achievement. So I have here a certificate of congratulations presented to Lorena High School in recognition of being selected the 2013 National Blue Ribbon School. Congratulations on your exemplary dedication and commitment in the pursuit of excellence. Great job.
Thank you, Andy Fox, for that, and thank you to the city council for taking time out of your agenda to recognize Lorena. Many of you were at our celebration back in November, where we brought back our plaque and the flag and had a great celebration with our students, staff, key stakeholders in the community. And it is a great day of celebration, it's a great year of celebration for Lorena High School, but also for our community to show the great things that we're capable of doing here in Thousand Oaks. And one of the things that I did state at that ceremony was that this is just a little symbol of what we've known all along, the greatness that happens at Lorena and the small community, the greatness that happens with the single gender education of young women who really go out and transform the world. So thank you so much.
Next, we're very pleased to bring up the Cabrillo Music Theater Artistic Director, Louis Wickenfield, to the podium, and Louis has a presentation for us.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, I'll be brief. For those of you who didn't make it two weeks ago to Carnival de Cabrillo, we had 150 people of all ages and dance styles learning the choreography to "In the Heights" together, right in front of the building here on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And I have goodie bags for all of you because we are very grateful to have Councilmember Bill De La Peña with us to make a proclamation, and we tried to get her to dance. You, I saw you grooving a little bit. But for the rest of you, I want you to have this, it's got some of the reviews that were and the clippings and some "Great In the Heights" bling. So I'm going to give that out during our presentation in a moment. But it was a real treat to bring the community together. We had students from all over the city learning the moves to a very contemporary new musical. I want to remind you that our next show after Forever Plaid, we're here tonight for Forever Plaid, but our next show is "In the Heights," and it is the regional professional premiere. It'll be at Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza in late March, early April, and then we finish the season with "Bye Bye Birdie" this summer, that'll be in July, also in the Cavali Theater here at the Civic Arts Plaza. But I want to tell you about Forever Plaid. We're celebrating our 20th anniversary season, Cabrillo Music Theater, we're the resident musical theater production company here at the Civic Arts Plaza. The very first show in this building was a Cabrillo Music Theater show, was "A Music Man" back in 1994. So we're celebrating our 20th anniversary. We brought one of the original Plads from New York and Los Angeles, Larry Raven, to direct this cast of Forever Plaid, and this is a handpicked cast of Plads from across the country. These are the very best you can find, and I am very honored that they will be on our stage. We will be opening this Friday, January 31st, in Play at the Cavali Theater, right next door, from the 31st to February 9th. It's a perfect show for the entire family, and tickets are at Ticketmaster, or come to the Civic Arts Plaza box office, or go to Cabrillomusictheater.com, and that's Cabrillo Music Theater with an R-E at the end. It's good for all ages, and I want to let you know that our teen performing group, the Cabrillo Teen Project, pulled together from young teens from all across the community, will be performing outside the theater before every show and inside the lobby at the end of every performance. I am so glad that you have so many young people here to see this, and I know I got some performers in the group, right?
Yes.
Yes. Well, the goal of Cabrillo Music Theater is to turn you into these guys, because they are phenomenal, and they all start just like you, and they want to get up on stage and perform, and they all wore exciting costumes just like you, and I'm really excited for you to get to watch them, and then we'll, some of us will stick around and see what you're doing. And to honor Dr. Seuss tonight is great, and we're glad to watch you see the Plads. So I want to introduce the Plads. They are Roger Beffler, Scott Dreyer, Jeffrey Scott Parsons, and Curtis Simmons, and we've got Albie Potts at the piano. Here's the cast of Forever Plaid.
Five, six, five, six, seven, eight. Full blank being frank, yes, no, Cabrillo. You say it's yes and then it's no, you say you stay and then you go, you're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? Ow! First you say you do and then you don't, and then you say you will and then you won't. You're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? And then it's no, and when you say you stay, that's when you go. You're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? Do I've been sitting on the fence and it doesn't make much sense 'cause you keep me in suspense and you know it. Why, why, you promised to return when I don't really burn well, I guess I'll never learn and I show it. Make up your mind, if you got a heart and if you're kind, then don't keep us apart, make up your mind. You're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? You hem and you ha, you hem and you ha, you hem and you ha, you hem and you ha. First you say you do and then you don't, no you don't, and when you say you will and then you won't, no you won't. You're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? Well, what's it gonna be? Now you wanna play and then it's no, then it's so, and when you say you'll stay, that's when you go. When you go, you're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? Yes, no, stay, go. You hem and you ha, 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 and 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 you ha, and you hem and you ha, and you hem and you ha, and you hem and you ha. You're so indecisive, if you got a heart and if you're kind, then don't keep us apart, make up your mind. You're indecisive now, so what are you gonna do? You say it's yes and then it's no, you say you stay and then you go. You're undecided now, so what are you gonna do? Do I, yes, no, stay, go, hem, ha, do I, do I?
That's the cast of Forever Plaid. They'll be at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza with Cabrillo Music Theater from January 31st through February 9th, and we're excited to see you all at the show, we're excited to see you all tonight, and we hope you'll have a wonderful musical evening of city business tonight. Thank you for inviting us.
Nice way to open the council meeting. We'll move to item six, that is our public comment. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official record should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Seven people have presented cards and pursuant to council standard, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Our first speaker will be our Public Works Director, Jay Spurgeon. Following Jay will be Dr. Richard Elsley, and following Dr. Elsley will be Jim Wolf. Good evening, Jay.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and council. As you are all aware, our 10123 interchange construction project will be starting in a matter of weeks, and I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to invite the public, our residents, our businesses, to a community meeting, an open house, one week from tomorrow, on February 5th, that's next Wednesday, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. The meeting will be held in the Founder's Room of the Cavali Theater here at the Civic Arts Plaza. This will enable the public to ask questions one-on-one with Caltrans and city staff. We'll have a brief presentation at the beginning, but really, it's more of an open-house forum so people can drop in at any time. This project is a $37 million investment in our infrastructure. The project will add one lane of, additional lane of traffic in each direction on the 101 freeway, as well as an additional lane on both southbound connector ramps from the 23 freeway. Three bridges will be widened, there'll be about three-quarters of a mile of sound walls along the project limits. So additional information is, will also be available throughout the project at www.toaks.org/10123. This is a two-year project, so people are invited to come to the open house, give us your contact information, because we will be providing updates throughout the project duration via email, as well as the webpage, and there'll be some other outreach events as we go through it. So again, want to invite the public to our open house next Wednesday, February 5th, starting at 6:00 p.m. in the Founder's Room of the Cavali Theater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spurgeon. Our next speaker is Dr. Richard Elsley. Following Dr. Elsley will be Jim Wolf.
Mayor Fox, council members, staff, and residents of the city of Thousand Oaks. My name is Dr. Richard Elsley, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and it is my pleasure to be here to tell you about the next talk in the Discovery Center's Science Speaker Series. Science is impacting our lives more and more every day, and it's a good thing if we understand some about what scientists are discovering. The purpose of the Science Speaker Series is to bring in scientists who can describe cutting-edge areas of science in a way that anybody can understand and enjoy. Next talk in the series, and TOTV, I have a slide up here. Next talk in the series is Thursday, February 6th, that's Thursday of next week, 7:30 p.m. right here in the Sheer Forum Theater of the Civic Arts Plaza. The subject is Robots and Humans: Exploring Our Horizons in Space. As we continue to explore the amazing things that may be out there in the solar system and beyond, how should we do it? Should we send out people, astronauts? The human brain will be right there, and they'll be able to figure out what they find. But on the other hand, it's really expensive to keep human beings alive out in space. So maybe we should send robots. We've got robots crawling around Mars, and now, right now, the Chinese have their lunar explorer, the Jade Rabbit, crawling around on the moon. That's a lot less expensive, robots aren't as smart, but they can take careful data. So that's the question. The speaker is going to be Michael Sander. He has 48 years of experience working in space programs at Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Pasadena and at NASA Headquarters. So he has, he's seen it all. So next, Thursday of next week, February 6th, 7:30 p.m., the tickets are $15 for adults, $10 for students, seniors, teachers. To get more information, the website is science speakerseries.org. That's science speakerseries.org, or call 805-905-8168.
Dr. Elsley, Councilmember Bill De La Peña has a question for you.
Good evening. I think that Chinese, the rabbit broke down, or something happened at last.
Every two weeks, it's gotta go to sleep because the lunar night is so cold. There's another vehicle, I think it's the lander, and that one is, is going to go to sleep. The rabbit, something's wrong, they don't know what.
Something is wrong with it.
So they had a really cute press release, as if it was written by the rabbit, saying, "Well, I really like to continue, but I think something's wrong with me, and in case it is, goodbye, human beings."
Yes. The question that I had was, I see that this particular session is sponsored by CLU as well as Earth's Magnet School, and being that Earth's Magnet School is for younger students, is this particular presentation geared toward the younger audience? Usually, I think your programs are geared toward high school students and older.
Yes, that's right. They are geared toward high school students and above, or mature middle school students, not the younger kids who go to Earth School, unless, you know, the kid who's going to be the director of NASA in 30 years, maybe, yeah.
Okay, so not for elementary school students, all right.
Not primarily for elementary.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Our next speaker is Jim Wolf. Following Mr. Wolf will be Judy Bruce. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. My name's Jim Wolf, I'm from Thousand Oaks, so some of you may remember me. Last week, we, it's the last episode, we provided graphics on just how badly the elderly residents of Ranch were getting hosed by 1559. And this was extremely well-received by the public, we had an awful lot of feedback on it. If you haven't seen it, we would encourage you to look it up on TOTV. So this week, we just want to give a slightly different graphic, just to reinforce what we did last week. So this, this chart here, the vertical column, the tall one, represents the typical area in the Thunderbird Oaks mobile home park, and the short column represents the space in a typical lot at the Ranch mobile home park. And you don't have to be Einstein to understand relativity. This really represents the relative rents. The rents at Ranch are exhibited here by the tall column, and as you can see, they're a little over twice the amount of money that residents have to pay for their space relative to the space that people at Ranch at the Thunderbird Oaks receive. So in essence, what's happening is that residents of Ranch are paying for a Ferrari, but they're getting a Yugo, or a Nano in this case. And we don't mind a Nano, and people are used to that. So the point is, the residents of Ranch really just want to get their money's worth, and they're not receiving it now. Now, someone has to stand up in front of a jury and explain just how this discrepancy and this convoluted concoction is justifiable. And fortunately, it's not going to have to be me. But obviously, we cannot make public everything we know or what we found out, but we can say that the Ranch residents right now are really suffering under this, under this resolution, and the pain and suffering is real. So thank you again for your attention, and we'll see you again in a couple of weeks, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Judy Bruce, following Ms. Bruce, will be Colleen Breiner Schmidt. Good evening, Ms. Bruce.
Good evening. I'm Judy Bruce, I represent Freedom Advocates. The issue is sustainable development, how it's a takedown of our way of life and abolishing private property. The UN has decided that we take up too much room, and ultimately need to reduce the population by 85 to 90 percent, and man is destroying the planet. Their goal: to control us. Use fear, junk science, pollution will fit the bill. It's called Agenda 21. Made intentionally vague, it's called Sustainable Development. Most Americans are clueless what it really means. Since when is the UN governing us, top-down, mandating one-size-fits-all? Do we like the fact that our cities have been formed into regions and were dictated to by an unelected, unaccountable bureaucracy? What happened to the days when we were in charge, making local decisions? Don't we incorporate, do cities incorporate to avoid bureaucracy? Do we like the fact that our local officials are now figureheads, just figureheads? They have been deceived to make think that the general plan is our plan. It's not. The policies are right out of the local UN Agenda 21 playbook. What does sustainable development really mean? Well, it means giving up our single-family home farm to live in high-density human settlements, telling us how much water and power we're allowed. Isn't that rationing? And getting rid of our property because the spotted owl or some plant is more important than humans? And are we ready to sacrifice our individualism for the common good? Isn't that communism? And do we want a foreign bureaucracy, making plans that we are all equal and ready to give up our property by letting them abuse eminent domain? Breaking news, it's happening now. Other states on a piecemeal. California is on a fast track for a takedown of our lifestyle as we know it. These are none of the things that our country was built on. Why do you think George Washington said, "Private property and freedom are inseparable"? Sustainable development is not about improving the planet, it's about a takedown of what we have. I have entered into the public record a notice of misprision, of treason, for failure to perform a public duty which violates Section 1, Article 10 of the Constitution prohibiting alliance with a foreign political organization. Please go to freedomadvocates.org, educate yourself, become a warrior to keep your private property and your freedom.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colleen Breiner Schmidt, followed by, so, so, so Beahan, Jill, so Be, I don't know. Shabon Hills? Oh, all right.
Once again, the National Education Association, and the California Teachers Association, and the Local Unified Association of Canoe Teachers have joined forces across the nation to celebrate the joys of reading a great book. This year on March 3rd, Monday, March 3rd, we'll be celebrating Read Across America, sponsored by NEA, CTA, and UACT. The more children read, the better they read, and the more they read outside of school, the better they do inside of school. This year, the Read Across America Committee is piloting a project called California Reads, working closely with the California School Library Association to expand our current Day of Reading celebration into a year-long promotion of reading for all ages. Rather than just one day and one book, we want children to read all year long. The week of March 3rd, teachers and students will be celebrating Reading Across the Canal Valley. Today, I brought Jer Alderson from Walnut Elementary School in Newbury Park, and some of her students to share part of their celebration.
Good evening, we are Walnut Elementary, and we are here to represent our 13th annual production, a tribute to Dr. Seuss, our family reading night. Every year, our entire staff, our students, and all our families come together. We sing, the children dress up and perform as the Dr. Seuss characters. They are all here tonight, and we would like to sing one song for you, and we would like to give you the words so you could sing along with us. The grinch, did you give him to them? It goes to the tune of Supercalifragilisticexpialidocious. It'll give you just a little taste of Walnut Elementary.
Walnut Elementary, super duper excellent day all the way. If you go to school there, everyone will say that you do this throwback all night, every single day. Walnut, super duper excellent day all the way. Amm, lu, 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 lu. I was thirty-three when I was just a lad. I never knew how grateful to learn all my social sad. But then this school, our learning school, taught me how to grow. A social brand, you know, the land, I'll tell you what I know. It's Walnut, super duper excellent day all the way. If you go to school there, everyone will say that you do this throwback all night, every single day. It's Walnut, super duper excellent day all the way. One... One, super duper excellent all the way. Walnut, super duper excellent all the way. Could I just say one thing?
Of course.
Can I say, I just would like to say one really, really important thing about Walnut Elementary, is that Colleen called us on Friday night. My parents had one day's notice, and look at the turnout that we got from our families. We have wonderful families at Walnut. Thank you.
Nice job.[635.54][635.54](audience cheering)
And on that note, on Monday, March 3rd, at the Thousand Oaks Library and the Newberry Park Library, from 4:00 to 5:30, we will be holding a celebration of reading as well. So thank you very much.
Kids, super duper excellent all the way, is all I gotta say. You know what? Come on up, and we'll have council have a picture with you. That would be great. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
(inaudible) Okay, that about does it. Motion to adjourn? Doesn't get any better than that. All right. Shabon Hill, and our last speaker will be Vic Abruzzo.
Good evening, council members, and of course, our mayor. My name is Shabon Hill, and I am the proud director of the Alliance for the Arts. On January 21st, we were saddened to hear the news of the passing of a great woman who has helped shape Thousand Oaks for the past fifty years. She is a woman after my own heart. She was born in Illinois and had got her teaching credential at Waldorf College in Iowa. She taught in a rural, in a rural area before she married Ray and came to Thousand Oaks. Throughout her life, Helen was valued by her Norwegian culture, and she loved it. Her fantastic ability and artistic talents enriched all of us. She enriched the lives of her family by creating beautiful and a warm family feeling for all. She excelled in domestic arts of embroidery, quilting, gardening, cooking, and of course, known for her specialty, her Norwegian pastry. She has loved being with her family. Her attitude, her acceptance, her calm spirit, her peaceful nature contributed to her long life of a hundred years. She greatly enjoyed her birthday in October and is very thankful for the accommodations by the city of Thousand Oaks, President Obama, and her countless friends and family that joined her on that day. She continued afterwards by attending weekly mass at Ascension Lutheran Church and even coming to the art events here at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. She was known as the first lady of CLU, but for many of us here, she was known as Helen. We knew her spirit was sweet. She always had a kind word from her mouth, followed by the most sincere smile. She will be greatly missed by so many. I'm honored to know through her own daughter and the legacy that she will carry on with the Alliance for the Arts and the Cohen family, that they will ensure today and forever that the Alliance will ensure that there will always be a place for all that come through these walls. On behalf of the Alliance, she will be greatly missed and so many of people that love her dearly. Thank you for allowing us this time to remember her.
Thank you, Shabon. Sorry about the pronunciation of your name, the spelling just threw me for a loop there. There's no "woe" in that name. All right, our last speaker under public comment is Mr. Vic Abruzzo.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Victor Abruzzo, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I want to follow, if I may, Mr. Wolf's comments with regard to Ranch Mobile Home Park, and just to delight your evening, throw some numbers at you. The Internal Revenue Service suggests that in this standard metropolitan statistical area, the average income is forty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. The Ventura County Star on the 13th of December suggested that, in response to the question, what does it cost a family to live here? A family of two costs approximately thirty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-nine dollars. You all have copies of this, so there's no need to take copious notes. The Ranch Mobile Home Park currently has an average income of about twelve thousand, six-hundred dollars. I don't want to reveal dirty secrets, but I would respectfully suggest there's a significant disconnect when the federal government tells us that we are protected for our economic social security by being granted a raise of one and a half percent, and this city council, in its wisdom, granted a forty-four-dollar rental increase, which was approximately fifteen percent, or ten times the raise those folks received. I understand, and I apologize, I was in prison last week and didn't get to attend the meeting, but I understand that you granted yet another water increase, which simply compounds the disconnect. I thank you for your time. I hope you think seriously before you put other impositions on the seniors whose income is severely constrained, and we are at a loss on how to keep up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment section. We're gonna move now to Item 7, that's the consent calendar. It's the pleasure of the council. Just for the record, I'll be abstaining from the Miller Ranch vote, so if we can call it special. Also, the water and wastewater vote, I was not present for. So those two items, I will not be voting on. Just want the record to show I'm gonna abstain from those votes. All right, any items called special by the council on consent? Mr. Adams?
Seven H, please, Mr. Mayor.
Seven H. Any other items? Okay, Mr. Adams, seven H.
Thank you. Just a quick question for Mr. Spurgeon. This has to do with Hill Canyon Treatment Plant and some improvements we need to do there. And Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, for the audience, is the premier wastewater treatment plant here in Thousand Oaks. Could treat up to fourteen million gallons of wastewater a year. It's one of the jewels in our system. My question to you is this: one of the things it treats is rather a distasteful treatment, but it's called, it's called fats, oil, and grease, or fog. We'll call it fog from now on. And this item has to do with improving the fog system, the fog treatment system. My question to you is, will these improvements increase the capacity of our fog system, thus increasing the revenue that it generates? I should've mentioned that this, this treatment of this fog business creates a significant revenue source for the city. And again, back to my question, will it increase the capacity and allow us to have an uptick in revenue from that process?
Absolutely, it will. We'll build two more, accept more, and do better with it. And it's, you know, it's how we're going to manage it, and we're gonna do a better job of it. We not only accept fog, but we accept a variety of different organic wastes. Some of them are just perfect for making gas, some of them less so, and so this is our way of upgrading that system, so that we have better control over it, so that we could make more gas, so that we could make more energy and heat, and a variety of other things there.
Good, good. That's good to hear. And from what I understand, this substance comes in regionally by the truckload. It's not just from Thousand Oaks, it's from areas all around our city, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah, good. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we do have a speaker card on 7D, so if council will oblige, we'll have Mr. Richard Kayachi.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Richard Kikuchi, and I'm a partner with LSL CPAs, your auditors, and I'm here to just briefly discuss the audit. I know it's Item, I believe, 7D on Consent Calendar, talking about financial reports. So I just wanted to merely say the audit went very well from beginning to end. I actually had a chance to speak to the Finance Audit Committee today, speaking with Mayor Fox and Council Member Irwin, and we had some good dialogue, kinda talking about the audit and the reports. I do want to thank John Adams and his entire staff for making it a very successful audit, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you might have any.
Questions from the council. Ms. Irwin.
I thank you very much for your efforts over the last six years. We're, we're going to be going out for RFP and potentially are gonna have a new accountant. Just to let the public know, the Finance Committee does look at the audit, and then, I don't know if it's clearly understood, Mr. Fox and I meet alone with the auditor to discuss any things that might be uncomfortable about issues with staff. And every year, the results come back the same, that we have an excellent staff in the Finance Department, and we're very appreciative of the work you do and of the work that staff does. So thank you.
Thank you. Just to build on what Ms. Irwin says, that's just not the council's perspective. Each year, for many years, the city receives acknowledgement from the state, and those agencies that look at how we handle municipal financing and our accounting and auditing, and year after year, our staff at this city is recognized for excellence in this area. We thank you for your service, sir. Great job.
Appreciate it. It's been a joy working with you.
Mr. Minnick has some, some comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to also recognize our Assistant Finance Director, Jamie Boscaronio, sitting here, and Fay Minken, and all the others in the department. They do outstanding work, and they don't really get much recognition, not that they need to, but I just wanted to point out, they, they're sort of the unsung heroes of the organization.
All right. All right, what's the pleasure on the council for the consent calendar? Mr. Adams?
Move the consent calendar, including 7H.
All right, Mr. Adams moves the consent calendar. Again, for the record, I'm abstaining from the Miller Ranch and the water vote. That's M and N. Discussion? Vote, please.
The motion carries five zero with Mayor Fox abstaining on Items L, M, and N, and I'll read the ordinance titles. L is an ordinance approving the pre-zoning of property located east side of Upper Ranch Road, approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet north of Canaan Road, 2,000 Upper Ranch Road, zone change 2,010-70185. The applicant is KSK Investments LP. Item 7M is an ordinance adjusting and setting rates and fees of the city water division. And Item 7N is an ordinance adjusting and setting rates, fees, and discharge limits of the city wastewater division.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Item 8, we have no public hearing scheduled this evening. Item 9 is department reports. 9A is Thousand Oaks Plan to Assist School Sites, our annual project list, that's known as TOPAS, and John Adams is gonna provide the report on that. Good evening, Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, City Council. Actually, I have a brief presentation, and I'm gonna step through it. Just to give you a little background on the Thousand Oaks Plan to Assist School Sites, it's called TOPAS. That's sort of the acronym that staff uses. Back in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-four, the city and CVUSD entered into what is considered a pass-through agreement, and this was really with the Redevelopment Agency. And so it really covered the Thousand Oaks Project Area, Thousand Boulevard, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Project Area and the Newberry Road Project Area. The essence of the agreement is that five percent of tax increment, the net new revenue from property taxes, would go to CVUSD to assist in capital projects. So to date, since nineteen eighty-four, approximately twelve, eleven-point-eight million dollars has been utilized by CVUSD to fund capital projects. With the elimination of the Redevelopment Agency, which happened February 1st of 2012, the city does not get that money directly from the county and passes it through to the CVUSD, but actually, the county passes it directly through to CVUSD. Just to give you context, in fiscal year 1213, CVUSD received one-point-three million dollars for capital projects. Now, this is in addition to the pupil funding that they get and the Prop 98 minimums. So without the Redevelopment Agency, CVUSD would not get this additional money. So just to remind you that two, a year and a half ago, the city council, because of the dissolution of redevelopment, actually authorized the transfer of five-point-seven million that the city was holding in the TOPAS funds to CVUSD. And part of this agreement and the transfer required not just that the annual project list would be provided to the city council for approval, but would also have CVUSD provide an annual accounting. And so tonight, what is in front of the council specifically is the project list, but also the accounting of those funds over the years. Attachment 1 actually has the proposed project list. Just to give you an idea, three, three-point-four million dollars is identified in the project list for fiscal year 1314. Just to highlight a few projects, there's one-point-five million for improvements at TO High and four-hundred thousand for Newberry Park, the track renovation. Just, here's a listing of the past projects that TOPAS has funded. These all have been on past project lists. Thousand Oaks Performing Arts Center, I won't go through the list, but this gives you an idea of how those funds have been utilized from the benefit of the Redevelopment Agency. So pursuant to the, so that was my update on at least the TOPAS agreement and the project list. The staff report actually has two components. One is for the council to approve the project list, and the other is to appoint board members, two council members that will be foundation board members. And so talking about TOPAS Endowment Fund, the other thing at the same time that the council and CVUSD did was set up a foundation, actually created an endowment fund. And so it is a nonprofit, public benefit corp. The city manages the finances for it, does an annual filing, tax return. It's made up of two voting members of the city and CVUSD, and then there is one public member. The governing board, the city council appoints two council members to that foundation board. Just, I think I did not mention it, but the endowment fund was originally established with a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant from the Redevelopment Agency and a five-hundred-thousand-dollar loan from the general fund. And that general fund loan is still in the books as a loan, and is an interest-free loan that's for sixty years. So this happened in eighty-four, it's been thirty years since it, there's another thirty years. The original purpose was for that million dollars to be the endowment, and then for those revenues or interest earnings to be programmed. The board later determined to spend down five-hundred thousand and keep the general fund loan as the corpus of the endowment. And so I've highlighted back in, I believe it was nineteen ninety-eight, this, five-hundred thousand was programmed. I'm showing you how that money was programmed. The last time the board met was nineteen ninety-eight. The foundation over the years has fulfilled this obligation. The endowment reached a million dollars since December 31st. And so this is why the staff is in front of you to request an appointment to the foundation Recently, CVUSD did appoint two members earlier this month. I list them there. Timothy Stevens and Mike Dunn are the two board members that CVUSD appointed. Part of one of the other staff items tonight is to, is the council member appointments. And so the recommendation would be to confirm the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem Al Adam and Council Member Claudia de la Peña as part of the board. With that said, the board, once they convene, will pick a public member. The city will go out and do the normal recruitment for a public member. The board will then appoint that fifth member. The bylaws actually say that it's the first Tuesday of February of every year that the boards are supposed to meet. Certainly, that's not gonna happen. We staff will coordinate schedules with all the board members. I would anticipate- The original purpose was for that million dollars to be the endowment, and then for those revenues or interest earnings to be programmed. The board later determined to spend down $500,000 and keep the general fund loan as the corpus of the endowment. And so I've highlighted back in, I believe it was 1998, this $500,000 was programmed. I'm showing you how that money was programmed. The last time the board met was 1998. The foundation over the years has fulfilled this obligation. The endowment reached $1 million since December 31st. And so this is why the staff is in front of you to request an appointment to the foundation Recently, CVUSD did appoint two members earlier this month, I list them there, Timothy Stevens and Mike Dunn are the two board members that CVUSD appointed. Part of one of the other staff items tonight is to, is the council member appointments. And so the recommendation would be to confirm the appointment of Mayor Pro Tem Al Adams and Councilmember Claudia de La Peña as part of the board. With that said, the board, once they convene, will pick a public member. The city will go out and do the normal recruitment for a public member. The board will then appoint that fifth member. The bylaws actually say that it's the first Tuesday of February of every year that the boards are supposed to meet. Certainly, that's not going to happen, and we staff will coordinate schedules with all the board members. I would anticipate that the meeting would be in the next six to eight weeks. In the past, the board has only met on an app, between two and three meetings. It's really an initial meeting to talk about the parameters, get feedback from staff, and then decide how to program that $500,000. So just to say staff, both CVUSD and city staff will coordinate schedules and then calendar the first meeting, hopefully sometime in February or early March. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Questions for Mr. Adams, we have no speaker cards on this item. All right, what's the pleasure to council? Mr. Price.
Yes, I would move staff's recommendation on item 9A, and further, that would be, I believe it's 1 and 2, and approve Mayor Pro Tem Adams and Councilmember Bill de La Peña as the appointments to the TOPAS board.
Any comments, particularly from Mr. Adams and Ms. Bill de La Peña, this is actually a new committee, so this is, other than that, I don't think there's been any changes to the appointment, so. You're a minimum, okay, very good. All right, any further discussion? Ms. Irwin.
Well, aren't they both on the government, Intergovernmental Relations Committee? So it could, I mean, it makes sense that they would do it under that assignment, right?
Well, they're doing both.
Oh, they're different?
Yes. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing done, vote please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Item 9B is the 2013 revenue generated at Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant, and Mr. Chuck Rogers, the plant superintendent, is going to provide this staff report. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Chuck, I think your mic's not on yet.
You're absolutely right.
There you go.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Chuck Rogers, superintendent of your wonderful wastewater treatment plant. And tonight, actually, the presentation is going to be given by Santos Marquez, laboratory supervisor, and I'm going to stick around and do the PowerPoint, hopefully, and be able to answer whatever questions we might have. If I could say something a little bit about Santos, he's been here at the city of Thousand Oaks 16 years, and I recruited him at Hill Canyon for 12 years, and he's done a brilliant job there. But I also was the first guy to hire him in the field of wastewater treatment, so you owe me a ton, but anyway. So we'll start off right away, Santos Marquez.
Mayor Fox, council, good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity tonight to come in for a couple of minutes and let you know what we're doing over at Hill Canyon, and talk about the revenues we generated in 2013. Before we start the actual presentation, I'd like to bring up a request that we have with regards to our current contract and our current tipping fees that we have with our FOG food waste program. I'm going to use FOG, and brown restaurant grease interchangeably tonight, so it means the same thing. In 2013, we accepted fats, oils, and greases at a cost of 6.25 cents per gallon. We're due to raise that tipping fee to 6.5 cents for this year, but we're here tonight to kind of, to request that we freeze the amount of the tipping fee at 6.25 cent, mainly because we see, we foresee an increase in competition for this waste stream, and we want to make sure that the relationships we've made with the eight hauling companies that currently bring grease to our facility, we want to maintain those relationships, and we want to make sure that they understand, that we understand that costs for hauling this material will vary at different places, but they'll benefit by bringing it to us in the future. So that's the reason for that request there. It's a symbiotic relationship with these grease haulers, so we're getting the tipping fee, we're generating renewable energy, and they're saving money by not having to take the material to places like Bakersfield and Los Angeles, so we want to maintain that relationship, and that's the main reason for keeping the fee at 6.25, our request at least. Secondly, beginning in 2013, we wanted to charge grease generated in the city of Thousand Oaks, 2 cents a gallon, and the planning, the ideas behind that were that, you know, the grease hauler would pass along the savings to the local restaurants, and the local restaurants may pass that savings on to the consumer. But during the course of 2013, we, and after the reception and receiving over 4 million gallons of grease, we found that only 4.6% of that material was actually coming from city of Thousand Oaks limit, so we weren't getting the proper amount of grease to sustain that price, to keep it at 2%. The second reason also is that I couldn't audit the program. I would, I wanted to see if the grease haulers were taking the savings that we were giving them and passing it on to the consumer or to the restaurant, and several attempts were made to make phone calls to these people, ask for their invoice, what they paid, you know, last year as opposed to 2013, what they paid for grease unloading in 2012, and I just couldn't get a solid answer, so it was nearly impossible to audit the program. So that was the reason why we want to get rid of the 2 cents and just go back to the 6.25 cents and just freeze that price there. Now for the topic of the day, of the evening, our revenue sources, we have four major revenue generating sources at Hill Canyon. First is our, the money we get from the sales of reclaimed water. Anywhere from $700,000 to $1 million per year is generated from the downstream, Cameroosa Water District, taking water from us downstream. Benefit to them because it's clean water, it's got a touch of phosphorus, touch of nitrate, touch of ammonia. All that's great for what they use for irrigation purposes downstream, so that's a big, that's our biggest revenue generator. Last year, it brought us over $700,000. A little bit about our FOG food waste program, which is another revenue source. Last year, we're currently, the program consists of eight haulers that are, that we're working with. They brought in an average of 400,000 gallons per month last year, and we want to, we deal with, we deal with not only restaurant grease, but we're also dealing with food waste, things like Frappuccino coffee waste from a plant processing facility that bottles that make Starbucks coffee in the bottles. We're doing, we're dealing with a product called lactose whey, which is one product from a cheese processing facility. All these things we're bringing in after we obviously make sure they're going to be compatible with our digestion system, to determine whether or not they're going to be good gas producers. If they're going to produce gas, and we feel that they're going to produce gas in a proper amount that's comfortable with us, we'll bring that product in and get some revenue from it. Our third revenue source that we have at Hill Canyon deals with the plots of land out in front of the facility that we lease out to Underwood Farms. Currently, we get $6,000 per month for them to, he grows anything from celery out there, cilantro. The last couple of crops have been, red jalapeno peppers that they're using for the sriracha sauce that's been in the news lately. We've kind of explored too, doing film and video location, these, trying to generate resource revenue from having people come in and do commercials at the plant. We've had a couple of commercials done, we had a short play program that was filmed, an extended commercial, but that's something that we're just touching on right now. So we've had some people come in and take a look at the facility, but nothing, nothing for last year, actually, so it's an endeavor that we'll continue to try to, hopefully realize in the future that we can get some money from. So these are, this is the graph of the 2013 revenue generation totals for Hill Canyon. Biggest amount, of course, is the reclaimed water, we generated $700,000. Grease loads, $220,000, and that combined with our frappo food waste total of $90,000, and our land leasing out there for agriculture, brought us in almost $1.1 million for 2013. So obviously, with that, that amount coming in last year, we want to build on it for 2014. We know that with our current FOG program, food waste program, and the eight customers that we're currently dealing with, that we can definitely reach the $1.5 million revenue goal next year. As always the case is, at Hill Canyon, we're always looking to explore other ventures that could bring in revenue. We're always throwing ideas around, things that might help us generate some more revenue. And we realize that not only is Hill Canyon an environmental asset, but it's also a financial asset to the city. And we're always going to be looking to optimize gas production from our, from our FOG station to increase electrical generation and more creative use of our, of our heat, to generate, generate heat generation. And with that being said, I'm open for questions. Well, before I close, I'd just like to say that I've been with the city for 15 years, as Chuck mentioned, and one thing that I really appreciate about working for the city is the fact that, that we're allowed to think out there. It sounds kind of funny to say that, but, but we're given the option to throw out ideas, weigh pros and cons, and act on the ideas if there's more pros and cons, but that's not possible unless we get the support from, you know, Scott, council, Jay. So I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to delve into things like this, to explore these ideas, and to make the Hill Canyon Wastewater Treatment Plant a financial asset to the city. And any questions?
Okay, nice report. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill de La Peña.
I don't really have a technical question. I think you guys are doing a wonderful job so far, and I'm glad that you're thinking and being very creative, thinking outside the box. That's very important when you want to be progressive when it comes to the environment. You mentioned commercials, I think that's a good idea, and/or other filming, film shoots. What commercial was filmed on location at Hill Canyon?
The last one we did was a South Korean solar company, if you can imagine that, and we had, what was the number one actress in South Korea show up? I don't know who she was, but she seemed lovely, and, you know, the usual group of people. We get approached by a lot of different people. We currently have three that are, we're kind of negotiating with and things. We have a process here at the city to go through them, but it's just a perfect location because you're out there surrounded, there's nobody around, and it's quiet, and it's got a lot of cool stuff around it, so.
Very good, thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Irwin and then Mr. Adams.
Very nice presentation. We always like to hear about revenue generation, and especially when you're looking at grease and the frappo, those are, those are really over the last few years, so that was money that was not there at all. I just wanted to see here with the goals and objectives, two things, you're talking about more creative use of heat generation, can you explain a little bit about that?
Sure, we have all these great resources out there, we take care of, you know, we create gas, we certainly make energy from the sun, but with our cogeneration project, which, you know, has aged me dearly the last year or so because of the issues that we've had with it, but, you know, we'll have our new equipment online here probably in about three months, and with that, we're just going to do a better job of taking that heat that's generated by that engine and by every, every part of that engine, the exhaust, the heat from the engine itself, and we already, you know, save a ton of money, at least we have historically with, you know, the fact that we heat our digestors with that, we heat our admin building with that. We're also going to use that, and you've seen a stream of things come by you in the last couple of months about changes we want to make at the treatment plant. One of those is drying the biosolids, and using the heat from that to do that, because that's just a money saver. We haul biosolids around, they're full of water, nobody wants them, and so we're going to turn them into dust. And, you know, the way to do that is to use that resource that's available to us. And, you know, quite frankly, you know, we're, we're part of a national group of water environment research foundation, we share information with them, but, you know, I'll tell you what, in Thousand Oaks, we've got it going on. I mean, we're recognized around the country, you know, as a facility that's really trying to take advantage of these resources. There's no reason we shouldn't, and I echo what Santos says, if it wasn't for a council like the one we've had here, this stuff, none of this stuff would happen, and it's not happening most places, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and you can say it's the council, I think it's all the out-of-the-box thinkers that are down there. You do an extraordinary job. The second question I had is usually in your goals and objectives, you have 100, getting 100% off the grid. Did we, is it determined that right now it's a little bit difficult with all the regulations and transmission fees and all that to do that?
Well, I, you know, we've talked about this over the years, I can tell you right now, there's no point of trying to do more than 100%. It just is, it's too difficult, it gets too complex, and quite frankly, I understand why now. You know, it's a big deal to take your electricity and export it out into a grid that's fairly complex. And I think, you know, not to proselytize too much, but it is my birthday today, so I guess I can leave me a little bit, is, you know, it gets very complex when you're taking all these buildings and then putting out episodically bursts of energy into them. So I think we really need to focus, and we're doing a fine job of this, is let's be 100% and let's be happy. You know, we could do more, we could send it up here, we could wheel it up here, but the cost of this gets pretty expensive when you get down to the metering of it, and actually, I have a lot of sympathy for the utility, because this is not easy technology right now to do. So while it sounds great that, you know, we all, you know, throw our energy out onto the grid, I think we're understanding across the country, that's, that's more complicated than it sounds, really, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Adams, and then Mr. Price.
Thank you. Hi, fellas, appreciate you being here tonight. I really sense an esprit de corps when it comes to Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, a real buy-in, and I appreciate that. I like the way you refer to it as Hill Canyon Treatment Plant Incorporated. Yeah, it's a, it's a business, and you're running it like that. As far as extra revenue, I want to tag on to what Councilmember Irwin said, as far as, I mean, as you've mentioned, Chuck, you're out pretty much in the middle of nowhere, you've got a lot of space, so it wouldn't make sense to try to increase that solar array so we could be a net seller of electricity versus, versus a consumer?
Again, it just gets, it's not that we can't do it, it, we absolutely have the technology to do it. It just gets, you know, and I'm not one to back down from a challenge, but from the regulatory standpoint, it gets more, it gets really quite difficult. You know, we end up, you know, what we end up doing is we end up generating it, and then what, you know, ideally, what I'd love to do is farm it to different, or wheel it, rather, to different city buildings and things like that. By the time you get done with all the costs that are involved with it, it's much better, in my opinion, to put a solar array here, put it on a building, shave off that peak so that you're not paying that, because we're going to get hammered on that peak. You know, that's the, one of the reasons why in California, solar is going to look real attractive here within a year, because we're going to see some major increases in electrical costs and things like that. But as far as the, you know, the return on investment and other things like that, I'm just, I'm just not sure about it, maybe things will change, but right now, it's a root canal to try to figure out how to do it, and to make it work financially, so it makes sense. I'd love to do it.
Well, it sounds like you're on top of it, monitoring, and if the, the opportunity presents itself, you'd be, you'd be looking at it.
Yes, sir, we would.
A second quick question I have is, a lot of the major car, well, some of the major car companies are going to be coming online with hydrogen vehicles in the not-too-distant future, they're talking like 2015, they might start mass producing them, and I read an article where wastewater plants could be producers of hydrogen. And I know it's a little bit out in the future, but have we, can, could we be a hydrogen producer? Is that economically feasible thing for us to look at?
I'll tell you, I had lunch today with a very good friend of mine, who's the, you know, Michael Lambert here, I've been a city resident for many years and has worked with me at Hill Canyon, and we were sitting there going, the technology jump that's occurred in five years. I wish I was 30 again so I could be in this field, because there is just so much happening. And so I would say right now, not really, but I wouldn't say in five years it wouldn't be a great idea. I mean, we have these hydrocarbons around, and we need, it takes a lot of energy to create that hydrogen, but is it a great idea? Absolutely. And, you know, we have more than most people have. And, you know, we have more than most people have, more, more capabilities of doing things. You know, we're driving around in natural gas vehicles now at Hill Canyon, and so, you know, we're good, we could be great, you know, when this technology comes forward and things like that. I expect if anybody does it in the future, it's going to be here at Thousand Oaks, quite frankly.
Well said. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to say that, you know, I'm a big fan, and it's not, it's not every day that a city's wastewater treatment plant is viewed as the jewel of the city. But that's not the case here at Thousand Oaks. It is. Hill Canyon is a, just a marvel. Having been there and toured it and seen what it is that you do with what comes in and that you're able to make money off of that, it's just fabulous. One of the, the other little-known secrets about the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant is that they have a lake out there as well that was part of a mitigation measure. And I assume that, that that's probably a place that folks would want to use for commercials or film shoots, because it's, it's wonderful. I mean, you have all sorts of birds out there, and it's just a, a great place. So I just want to echo the comments of the others here. You guys do a great job out there, thinking outside of the box and coming up with new and innovative ways, not just to save money, but to, to make money. And keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We have three recommendations that are contained in the staff report. With pleasure of the council. Mr. Adams.
Yes, I will move those three recommendations in the staff report.
Mr. Adams moves items one, two, and three. Discussion on his motion. Hearing none. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
That is approved. Chuck, don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Because in Thousand Oaks, you can actually have your cake and eat it too.
[laughing]
So Mr. Minnick is going to present you with a, with a birthday cake. So if you'll come, if you'll come to the podium.
I'd be happy to do that.
It's a good thing you lit those candles next to Mayor Fox, a firefighter.
Chief Smith's gone, so, yeah.
Want to take a guess how many candles should be on that cake?
Actually, we know.
Oh, you do? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. There you go, Chuck.
Well, there, let's hope the smoke alarm doesn't go off here. Thank you so much. I, I love working here. It's been a great thing for my career, and, and, you know, God bless you all, okay? And thanks for the cake, all right? Have a great night.
All right, Chuck. Happy birthday.
Take care.
All right, that concludes this item, and we'll now move to item 10 is committee commission board reports. I know we have none. Item 11 is the redevelopment agency, none. Item 12 is council issues and recommendations. 12A is the committee assignments. If you check your packet, basically, with the exception of TOPAS, I just continued the current assignments that the council had previously requested under Ms. Bill LaPena. And so is there any discussion on these? We need a motion for council to affirm these. Ms. Irwin.
I'll move that we confirm the council assignments.
All right. Ms. Irwin moves the recommendation discussion. Vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 12B is follow-up reports for meetings attended by council members. B1 is the League of California Cities, actually, we have two, one and two. So Ms. Irwin, why don't you go first, and then Mr. Price, you can follow it up.
All right. In the council packet, you'll see the information. I've, I've switched policy committees, and I'm on the Environmental Qualities Policy Committee. And I think the, the major thing that was of interest is, the big concern on everybody's mind is, of course, water. And we had presentations on three different, three different recommendations for water bonds, and, you know, they all differ slightly in, in what they spend, spend the money in. So if you, if you look, there's Senator Wolks' proposal and Timothy Quinn from the ACWA and Alf Brandt. And basically, it looks like the, the amounts are between about 6.4 billion and 8.2 billion. And you probably recall, when the water bill initially came out, it was right in the 12, 13, 14, does it stand there? Billion-dollar range. And so they're just trying to make it more palatable to the public. But this is an issue that absolutely needs to be faced by the, the voters. We need to take care of having a more steady water supply, and especially in this time of drought. We are, we are in trouble if we don't look to the future with this. And that's the report. Full details in the packet.
All right, Mr. Price.
Thank you. Yes, I too attended the League of California Cities policy meetings on, that last Friday, that would have been the 24th. And I was once again appointed to the Public Safety Committee. And there were a number of items of interest there. First of all, we had a speaker, Diane Cummings, from the Department of Finance, who talked about AB 109 prison realignment. And she gave the, the perspective that is coming out of Sacramento. She was actually very receptive to the pleas of a number of former retired law enforcement officers who are now council members in other cities, who were saying that we need more funding in order to continue to monitor the people that are being released from, from jails and sent back out into the communities under the supervision of the probation department. They just don't have the adequate means to, to supervise them. So more money for that would be great, and she was going to take that message back to the governor's office. Next, the, the league has taken the unusual step of getting out in front of what they see as a likely possibility that marijuana would be approved here in this state, as it has been in several other states. So they've come up with, and Cal Chiefs, California Police Chiefs Association has worked with the league staff, and they've come up with a, a scheme where it, it would be something that we could live with. It would allow cities to maintain control over medical marijuana locations, and, you know, it would prevent the proliferation of them in, in many cities, which is a concern. So that was an interesting conversation that we had there. And then there were two current bills that the league took a position on. One, AB 1327, which Assemblymember Gurrell put forward, and it dealt with unmanned aerial aircraft systems, basically drones. Unfortunately, the Public Safety Committee was not able to take a position in support because of some of the language in there that was, in our view, overly restrictive. So we took a position to oppose that unless it were amended. And then the next one was dealing AB 1439, which was a sweepstakes. And there's a, in a number of cities, there are internet cafes that are popping up, and it is a problem in Los Angeles County and surrounding cities to us, where these internet cafes have essentially what they call sweepstakes, but what it really is, is gambling. And this will tighten some of the language in the law and make it illegal. Essentially, it is gambling now, and this will close a loophole in the law. And we took a position, again, in support of that legislation. So any other details that you might want are contained in the packet here, and thank you.
Thank you both for your service on those committees. The recommendation is receive and file those, so if there's no objection, we'll receive and file those reports. That'll conclude item 12. We moved item 13, that's the city manager's report. Mr. Minnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional follow-up from, excuse me, follow-up from tonight's meeting. The next city council meeting will be on February 11th, and that will be in a different location. That'll be at Cal Lutheran University in the Lund Ring Event Center. And that'll start at 5:00 with an open house. So members of the public, you're encouraged to come see the city council meeting on the road, so to speak. The main theme during the council meeting will be preparing for the city's 50th anniversary celebration and the events over the, the next year. There will be a few consent calendar items as well, but we'll be reflecting on the city's longstanding town-gown relationship with Cal Lutheran University. So that's at 5:00 PM for the open house, and then 6:00 PM for the meeting. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Ms. Noonan is going to announce a closed session. The council will convene after we re-adjourn tonight, and we will not be making any announcement after that.
Yes, thank you. We have one closed session matter tonight. This is a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation Castro versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56201300432039 pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.98. And as indicated, I will not have anything to report following the closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. Do want to point out, for the public's information, we have a scout here. There are basically four people left in the auditorium this evening. I'm not, don't know the young man's name, but I'm sure he's here getting a merit badge. He stayed for the entire council meeting with his dad, apparently, and so we congratulate you for your, for your service and your involvement in scouting. Good job. We wish you the best. That brings us to adjournment tonight. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of a very special woman. We many times talk about the fathers of our community. Well, tonight, we're adjourning certainly with one of the mothers of our community in memory of Helen Olson. Many of you know that Helen was celebrated her 100th birthday here last October. She passed away of natural causes on January 18th, 2014. City provided Helen and her family a proclamation for her 100th birthday. Helen came to Thousand Oaks in 1963 with her husband Ray, whom she was married to 69 years. Incredible. She was a lifelong member of the Ascension Lutheran Church, also the first lady of California Lutheran University, of which her husband Ray was the president. This occurred from 1963 to 1971. Helen's contributions to Cal Lutheran were focused on women's league, the CLU Guild, as well as the arts and music. Helen, along with her husband Ray, established the Sarah and Thomas Hellison Award, the Raymond M. Olson Family Scholarship, and built the Olson Family gazebo at Cal Lutheran. She was a founding board member of CLC, the Caneo Symphony League, and a founding member in the Caneo Valley Historical Society and the Alliance for the Arts. She was active in many, many programs here in our community. Above all of that, Helen will be known and remembered as a woman of strong faith, hope, and love. She is survived by four children, 11 grandchildren, and seven great grandchildren. And I do want the record to reflect that Helen's daughter Eloise is here this evening along with her husband Chuck. So our sincerest condolences go out to your family, those of us that had the honor to be at the service. It was truly an honor to participate in such a great woman's life. With that, we will adjourn to our council meeting for February the 11th, 2014 at 5:00 PM. We are adjourned.